All right, calling the December 12th Park Township Board Meeting to order. And if you stand, I will be giving the invocation and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We open with prayer. Lord, today we move, we start something new, a new board, starting a new term. And we seek your wisdom to serve our community well. Lord, you've given us work to accomplish, decisions to deliberate, issues to understand. They would be slow to speak, seeking to understand, and diligent to listen to each other and to our citizens. We offer up this meeting to you and our service to you. Thank you, Lord. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Thanks again for holding me. I'm not quite used to being in the center seat here, so.
Yeah, I just want to say welcome to the two new members of our board. And thank you Joan and Shar for stepping up and joining us at the Park Township Board. So I personally will try to help you as much as I can and I'm sure Howard will do the same. But thank you for your willingness to serve. Again, thank you for the other returning members to come and step up for another four-year term. And so this is a pretty exciting time for our township and again, thank you for your service to the community. And I don't want to exclude our favorite legal counsel, Dan. Thanks again for being the steady rock at the end of the table there. So at looking at the agenda, there's a couple changes that have been requested. And one is to move item 10. Let's see, the what was it? It was 10, move 10I to the very last item on the last action item. That's due to Mr. Well, Mr. Curtis is going to be a little late to the meeting, so he'd like to attend the meeting. So we're just going to move that one down to the last item. And we need to add an item to the action, which is a signature authorization for the Coast Guard Purchase Agreement. And so we'll add that as letter 10. Okay, and L. L, so that'd be a Coast Guard authorization. And when we get to that point, Howard will explain that. So. So so moving on to the agenda, were those two agenda changes, one delaying item and then adding the Coast Guard? Is there any other items that are changes to the agenda that need to be added? Seeing none, motion to approve the agenda?
Support.
Support. All right. All favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, the agenda is approved as presented. And now we have approval of the consent agenda. Any changes or additions to the minutes as they have been in your packet? All right, seeing none. Payment of bills, any questions or items to? All right, seeing none. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Jim, support, support. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, because agenda is approved. Thank you. This is the time for public comment. It's a privilege for us to hear our constituents. We're going to move into two public comment periods. There is two. This is the first one. We appreciate your participation in this meeting. You have the right to address the board on any issue you'd like. It's your time for public comment. We will respectfully listen, yet not engage in conversation. This may seem odd, but we do have an agenda and this township business to attend to. If you just desire further discussion on your topic, please schedule an appointment with our township manager, Howard Fink. If this is awkward, please contact me. In order to keep the meeting moving, please limit your comments to two minutes. And thank you in advance for keeping your comments respectful. And you'll hear this every meeting that you attend with me. So, all right, so I'll start with the left side. Is there anyone on the left side that would like to speak and comment? Yes, please. You have the opportunity to identify yourself, but you're not required to.
Okay, well, hello, everybody. My name is Kevin Moss. First of all, I just want to thank you all for not only being here, but for supporting me. And I wanted to say thank you to all of you and thank you to our whole community and the 754 of you who so graciously wrote my name in for trustee. Unfortunately, I got destroyed, but it's okay. So I just wanted to say we love Park Township, we love our community. And I have nothing but trust and faith in each and every one of you that you're going to do everything that you possibly can to better our community and preserve our future. So I appreciate you. I appreciate everything you've been doing. I also have a little announcement, something I'm proud of. Before, so in our district below us, the highest ranking Republican in Michigan government, I'm a, I'm accepted a legislative aide for him, for the Eric Nesbit, Senator Eric Nesbit. And I just wanted to say I'm gonna, I said I want to bring lifeguards to our state park and I'm going to. That's a promise. I am going to. That's, there is no other way to put it. I think what you guys have wanted to do at the the, the, gosh, what's it called? Ottawa Beach, the new place, the Coast Guard, what's that building? Yeah, yeah, that building, I think it's incredible. But I think the root cause, I think we all, I think we all know we need lifeguards. And I feel so strongly about that and I'm gonna, I'm not going to stop until we get lifeguards. But yeah, I just wanted to say thank you all very much. Thank you for being welcoming and I look forward to seeing you guys around. Thank you.
Well, the, before we get into the agenda, I just want to remind ourselves in our community why we're here. And this is a document that people review at our planning session. Our vision, mission, and values document. Park Township is a family-friendly, connected community that values our natural features, a function of character, and our recreational opportunities. Our mission, we proactively listen and lead, providing services and amenities while carefully stewarding our resources. And we do this all on using the values of integrity, respect, and being genuine. And as you, as I say this out loud, this is something that we're going to take up next week and see if there's any tuning to this particular mission, that vision value statement. But we are, this is what we are here for. So as we start a new term, this is what it is. So moving on, department reports are in your package. Any questions for the respective departments? Look, I have one for the chief. You've been, we made a significant decision last year to hire three and a half full-time fire chief, firemen. Do you have any first month, month and a half updates that you'd be willing to share with us? Yeah, I know it caught you kind of cold, but I'm sure that you know a few details.
I'm sure I can talk about it. As far as I look, I couldn't ask for a better crew that we hired, that we hired with this crew. They are not only helping with our department as a vision plan, but our values, the culture we're setting to be full-time in that. Soon as we started them full-time, one of the things that I did was went to Ottawa County Dispatch and had our run changed so that when the E-unit went out on a medical in Park Township, we ran alongside the E-unit, okay? And so for three months, I wanted to get used to and have our department and then get used to exactly what the call volume will be. If you look through all your old fire or board reports, we usually run about 25 to 30 calls a month. Last month, we ran 72 calls. So we are extremely busy and stuff like that. So it gave us a good sense of what we're going to be facing. We've done a lot of changes already in the station as far as how we inventory and the checks and balances. Not that we didn't do them before, but now we're doing them on a regular basis. Instead of maybe doing them every month or every other month, now we're seeing a lot of that getting done every week and being there. So it's been a great opportunity. When we have to backfill a shift, that one of our station firefighters comes and works in there. They're getting some specialized training in that. And I'm really pleased at where they have come. We just got notified that the EMS units that we purchased for those, they are here now. And so we're going to start that process of putting them together. And it looks like probably, I would say, late January, early February, we'll put them in service. So then that will actually put them in a vehicle like mine compared to running the big fire truck around and stuff like that. So we're going to see a maintenance cost there and a little easier and quicker to get around. So I think it's working really well. They're settling in, we're getting a good routine. You know, right after the New Year's and that, they've already got some goals that they're going to be looking at. Two of them or three of them already signed up to become certified instructors. So now we'll have fire instructors right at the station. So they're, they're really taking this a serious position and really, really moving us forward. Here's some of our goal is to make the step up. We're no longer a part-paid fire department, we're a combination of fire department. So. Any questions? If one thing, other thing that I would like to mention. I was selected, the Ottawa County Skill Center selected me with five other fire chiefs to be on the advisory board. And next fall, where they're going to be starting a fire academy so that our students can go from high school, they can go and go through a fire academy and actually graduate right from high school with a firefighter one and two certificate. So right out of high school, we could pick them up in possibility, put them on the department. So I'm on the advisory committee of that and it's going to give us a really good chance to look at the West Ottawa students going through the program. I'm, I'm sure we will. So.
Thank you. Thanks. Any other questions for any of the other departments? Seeing none, we'll move on. There is a proclamation that was delayed from last month. Jim, would you be willing to share? I'm scratching my throat a little bit. Would you be willing to read it?
Read it and.
Are they, yeah, are they here?
I don't, I don't see them.
I don't see them. Okay. Do we proclaim and then give it to them?
I think so. I think we were yelling back and forth because of the weather. I mean, they didn't, they were, there was going to be difficulty.
Let's proclaim and let's move it on. Let's take it off the agenda.
Read it, okay. Whereas recent water levels of Lake Michigan reached their highest since 1986, among the highest on record. And whereas the impacts of human-made structures and climate change are expected to result in even higher water levels in the future. And whereas Park Township experienced severe erosion problems and damage to public infrastructure. And whereas the township has been approached by the Great Lakes Coalition to be part of an effort to initiate state actions to promote beach resilience and environmental protection of the shoreline. And whereas the township recognizes the opportunity to attract federal funds to Michigan to augment the funding of beach restoration and ongoing beach resilience, now therefore be it resolved that Park Township endorses the efforts of the Great Lakes Coalition. And furthermore, be it resolved, Park Township asks its Lansing delegation to lead an effort to create a state of strategy that would allow for cost-effective sand extraction and deposit in order to build beach resilience, protection of public infrastructure, and protection of the natural environment.
And Dr. By, we need to vote on this, so.
Let's hope it's your name. I will make the motion to accept this proclamation.
This supervisor with my name on the bottom of it. Any discussion on this or questions before we ask to vote? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
So proclaim.
So, very good.
Well, the records show that it was in, so. All right, thank you, Jim. One of the things that. One of the things that I asked, since we have a couple new board members and a good reminder for all of us who have returned. I've asked our esteemed colleague to, Dan Martin, to give us a little update on the key things that we need to be aware of in this new run of trustees and leadership. And so, Dan, thank you for guidance. This is a pretty thick piece of paper. You got to buzz through it and a pretty good clip?
Yeah, my intent is to buzz through it at a pretty good clip, if that is okay with all of you.
I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And I wanted to make sure that you had a resource that would be available to you so that you can kind of use it throughout your tenure on the board. The first slide is just, don't sue me for this. Often apologize for being an attorney. But don't sue me for this. This is basically for general review for you. You're also going to see that these slides are a little bit different on the PowerPoint in front of you. There are a couple of like copyrighted photos or different types of things that I didn't want in the hard copy so that I don't get sued myself for copyright infringement. But I want to cover some constitutional law basics, both federal and state. Talk about your roles and responsibilities, and then also look at the sunshine laws, the Open Meetings Act and the Freedom of Information Act. The first thing that's important to understand from the constitutional standpoint is that we, the people, as indicated in the preamble, run the government. You guys are elected by the people and there's no place that you get closer to the people than at local government. Anytime you go up, whether it's to the county, state, or federal, you're getting farther and farther away from the people. So the people are going to have access to you. But I also want you to understand from that constitutional standpoint, kind of going back to Schoolhouse Rocky, for those of you who remember that. The US Constitution establishes not only the three-ring circus, which is the separate branches of government, legislative, executive, and judicial. It also establishes the system of federalism. And that's most prominent in the Tenth Amendment. It basically sets forth what the powers of the federal government is. And then in the Tenth Amendment of the Bill of Rights, it says that those powers that aren't delegated to the US by the Constitution or prohibited to it by its states are going to be reserved to the states and the people. And that's really where your authority ultimately comes from, is that sort of Tenth Amendment concept of federalism. In the state of Michigan has essentially reserved all that power to itself. And you will then get your power from the state. Other constitutional limits you should be aware of are the Fourteenth Amendment, which talks about equal protection of the law, due process of the law. And through that due process clause, other amendments have been incorporated to apply against the states and political subdivisions of the states, such as the First Amendment, people have the right to free speech, not only under the Open Meetings Act, but on the First Amendment, people can come here to petition government for redress of grievance, speak, et cetera. You've got religion, you've got press, association, and the right to petition government, as I mentioned. Fourth Amendment searches and seizures, that applies not only with law enforcement in the sense of criminal law enforcement with your Ottawa County Sheriff's deputies. It also applies in administrative senses when we deal with zoning. You still have to comply with the Fourth Amendment. And then the Fifth Amendment, general due process types of issues. The Michigan Constitution has a number of articles in it too, some of which again are going to apply to you. The Declaration of Rights is similar to the Bill of Rights in the federal constitution. Article two has general constitutional provisions for elections. Article seven deals with local government in particular. There are a couple of specific sections that deal with the township. We'll get to those in a moment. Article nine deals with finance and taxation. Article 11 deals with your public officers and public employees. I just kind of put those out there, so if you want to look for that, you can go online and find where those are. But the Michigan constitutional provisions that specifically apply to local government are basically section 17 through 20 of Article seven. And then also 32, and I think it's 33, although there's a typo on that. But basically, the township has corporate status. It is an entity with corporate powers as provided by law. In other words, your powers, you can be, you have the right to be sued and sue others. You have the right to enter into contracts and all of those types of things. But you only have those authorities that are provided by law. Same thing as an individual township officers, as indicated in Article seven, section 18. Every township is going to be organized where you've got terms of two or four years. There is specifically by constitution, a supervisor, clerk, a treasurer, and up to four trustees. And your powers as a board, which are sort of like legislative, you make the law for the township, that's going to be prescribed by law. As I mentioned, some of these laws, the revised statutes, the general township law says you're a body corporate, can sue, be sued. You can enter into contracts, you can acquire property for public purposes. You also have a bunch of laws that sort of limit what your ability to do things are. And that's going to include the Municipal Finance Act. A township can't just go to the bank and borrow money. You've got certain restrictions on you with respect to the Municipal Finance Act. You've got the Zoning Enabling Act and Planning Enabling Act. That's a lot of what the township does is regulate land use. That's constitutional. It doesn't violate people's Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment rights of due process for you to do that. But your authority comes from there and there are limits within there. Incompatible Public Offices Act, for example, we would not be able to have a member of the township board also serve as a member of the school board. Because there's a contract between the two entities and you can't avoid that incompatible office by saying, hey, I have a conflict of interest. I'm not going to vote on this. With respect to incompatible offices, if they're incompatible, if you accept that second office, you have withdrawn from the first. And then also election law that basically sets forth how you're going to go forward with your elections, not only for offices, but for borrowing money, all of those different types of things. The next slide deals with the roles and responsibilities of the supervisor. Most importantly, that person is the board chair. They moderate the meetings when they're present. The board supervisor can also call a special meeting. You have within your policies the ability, I think, of two trustees to ask for a special meeting. But it can be called by the supervisor alone. So Steve says, hey, we're having a meeting on December 19th. Even if my wife doesn't like it, we're having a meeting on September 19th. The supervisor also votes on all issues that come before the board unless the supervisor has a conflict of interest. Sometimes people say, hey, I'm the supervisor, I'm the chair, and I don't vote. That's not true. You vote on everything. Technically, under the law, the supervisor is the chief assessing officer, but we have an assessor who's certified, and so that person really does all the work.
I stopped in and saw L this week and I said, if he ever takes a vacation day, wants me to fill in, I can sit at his desk. So he's going to let me know.
There you go. The supervisor is also the legal agent for the township. Basically, like the spokesperson will normally sign contracts unless the board authorizes somebody else to do so. And also appoints planning commission members subject to the board approval. It doesn't specifically say in the law that you do that with a ZBA, although I think that's the process that we typically follow in the township. There are certain roles and responsibilities for the treasurer as well. I apologize for this. I'm going to skip it because Jan's not here. There are also roles and responsibilities for the clerk. And the clerk is ultimately the record keeper for the township. Might not be the FOIA coordinator, we'll get to FOIA in just a little bit, but they're the person that keeps all records, including the general ledger, including meeting minutes, including the oaths of offices, including notices for special meetings, et cetera. The clerk also keeps the voter registration files and conducts all of the elections. One of the most important and more recently, like almost controversial aspects as there's been challenges as to whether or not our elections are indeed secure. And so it becomes a very focal point for the township. Part of the records that the clerk keeps is the Township Ordinance Book. When people are looking for what our ordinances are, typically they'll go online. But by law, we're also supposed to have a book of all the ordinances that the township has adopted. The treasurer is also responsible for preparing the financial statements. I know that may sound strange. You would think that that would be the treasurer, but it's not. Did I say the treasurer there? It's actually the clerk. I'm sorry, the clerk. It's not the treasurer, it's the clerk who prepares the financial statements. Must appoint a deputy. I believe Danielle has been appointed. Technically, if Joan wants, sorry about this Danielle, Joan can pick a different deputy. She doesn't have to stick with Danielle. She can pick a deputy of her choosing. And also must post a surety bond just to make sure that everything is taken care of. The trustees all are collectively with the executive committee, the township's legislative body. You all vote on every issue that comes before the board unless you have a conflict of interest. Typically, a conflict of interest is when you own property within 300 feet of something that's coming before you. If you or a family member have a financial interest in the application that's coming before you, you would notify everybody of whatever that conflict is and advise, I have to abstain, not participate in the discussion or the decision because I have a conflict of interest. In some occasions, we've even had board members remove themselves and go sit out in the audience, especially if they then want to comment on the public hearing in their own individual private capacity. I strongly encourage that you don't do that, but I can't tell you that you cannot do that because you also have First Amendment rights. And we don't want to violate your own First Amendment rights. You guys are ultimately responsible for the township's financial health. And then there may be occasions where you guys get other duties assigned to you, such as committee meetings. The sunshine laws, these are the biggest things and I will go through these quickly. I apologize. But the sunshine laws, transparency, Open Meetings Act and Freedom of Information Act. Basically, both of them have a purpose that the government is going to be held accountable to your constituents, that we're going to have public access to official decision-making. That means all meetings of the public body are going to be open to the general public. Open to the public means that there's proper notice, that they're held in a place available to the public. Very rarely could you have a meeting in a private residence. There are certain requirements that would have to be met. I don't think the township has ever done that. I do remember one, it might have been a February where we did meet at Geneva. There was like a Saturday meeting in Geneva and a really bad snowstorm where I kind of gave this presentation. And I think Amanda Price might have been either the manager or the supervisor at that time. Basically, people are allowed to attend these meetings, cannot be excluded unless they commit a breach of peace, and they have to have the opportunity for public comment. Your public bodies include not only you as a board, but also your committees and subcommittees. Any entity that has basically been empowered by resolution even to exercise governmental authority, perform governmental functions. That doesn't mean Howard is a public body, acting as the manager when he's going through job applications. But if you delegate board authority to a subcommittee that might be comprised of a board member, Howard, and Mika, for example, and you are having that committee exercise board authority, that committee, even though it only has one of you on it. And you are having that committee exercise board authority, that committee, even though it only has one of you on it. Should comply with the Open Meetings Act. If they're just merely making a recommendation to the board from somebody who's not on the board, you establish different types of committees. They don't necessarily have to follow the Open Meetings Act, it might be a good idea that you do so. You might be more transparent than the law requires. What are meetings? Meetings is essentially any time when you have a quorum present that is either deliberating towards a decision. Or actually rendering a decision. Some people think that it's only when you make the decision, no, it includes deliberations as well. One place where we often get tripped up on this is through email. When we have email exchanges between board members, and you could have a situation where a trustee sends an email to the clerk. The clerk forwards that to the supervisor and treasurer, who then forwards it to another trustee. Congratulations, you now have a quorum, you have a meeting. Virtually, even though those emails might not have all been to four people at the same time. But you end up with each chiming in on something, you have deliberation, you have a meeting outside of the Open Meetings Act, that's a violation. Conferences and workshops, some of you guys are probably gonna go to MTA conferences, you can do that, you can have a quorum present at an MTA conference. It's not a violation of the Open Meetings Act, as long as you don't engage in discussions about township business. So if you go to the MTA conference up in Traverse City or Grand Rapids or wherever, great. But don't start talking about the latest planned unit development application or anything else.
Yeah, a question on the on the emails. We, um, I think, you know, I just wanna learn a shark. And Joan, sometimes Dan might send something out, or Howard might send something out, and there's this real apparently rude looking comment at the end. Please do not reply or forward, or, you know, it 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 is literally for this purpose.
Correct, exactly.
So don't be offended when you see something that rude coming out.
Right, when Julie or the township manager sends you the packet, that's not a violation, even though you're all getting the same thing all at once. And all seven of you have it, theoretically, there's a quorum. But if any of you reply all, or start deliberating, and the problem is, even if you start deliberating just between two members. It becomes so easy for one of those two members to forward it to a third, who forwards it to the fourth, and now you have a quorum. My general recommendation is is pick up the phone, even those phone calls can sometimes lead to open meetings act violations. Minutes, um, typically, the the deputy clerk is keeping minutes, um, and this is basically what's required in the minutes. They don't need a whole lot of information. Proposed minutes must be available within eight business days. Approved minutes have to be available within five business days after they are approved. And I say approved because minutes don't have to be approved at the next meeting, like you approved last month's meeting minutes tonight. You wouldn't have to approve them tonight, but you do have to correct them tonight if you have any changes. And we had that problem with the ZBA one time when I attended a meeting at the ZBA, where they didn't correct the minutes at the meeting after. The minutes of the meeting that occurred, they were trying to correct the minutes two meetings later and approve them at that meeting. And I said, you can't do that because the law doesn't allow you to do it, it would be a violation of the Open Meetings Act. So you could delay approving minutes, they proposed minutes have to be available within eight days. You could have approved to the last month's minutes at your meeting on the nineteenth. Or your meeting in January, but you wouldn't have been able to correct the November minutes. Special meetings, um, generally, you need eighteen hours' notice. And you don't have to notify under the Open Meetings Act what the meeting's gonna be about. Public participation includes the right to attend, comment, tape record, videotape, broadcast, telecast. If anybody here wanted to put this on Facebook Live, they have the legal right to do so. You can impose reasonable rules, that includes limiting how long one person can speak. You can't require prior approval, you can't require attendees. Who are just out here in the crowd to sign in or identify themselves, but you could, if you wanted, require speakers to do so. Um, and I know, uh, Mr. Chair, you said that you were gonna require Kevin to do so, he nonetheless volunteered his name. The the duration of comments and time limits, there are a couple of slides on this, one of the things I'm just gonna say about that is. You could not establish a general thirty minute, public comment's gonna last thirty minutes. And i- if you've got a hundred people here and they each wanna speak for two minutes, you have to let each one of them speak for two minutes, you can't cap it. At thirty minutes. Yeah, please do. No, you may place limits on how long, on how long one person can speak. Yes, yeah, and I think, uh, in the agenda, I think it said two minutes. So yes, the 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 courts, the Attorney General's Office have both indicated that limiting the the length of time. Is a legitimate time, place, and manner restriction, doesn't violate the Open Meetings Act, doesn't violate the First Amendment. The only time you can exclude somebody from the meeting is if they commit a breach of peace at that meeting. I've I honestly, I was fired from a school district one time because a person was really, really rude. Um, and committed a breach of peace at a meeting, was removed from that meeting, and I told the school district. You have to let them back, like the next meeting, they can come back, you you can only exclude them from that meeting. And the school district's like, oh, do whatever we want, so we'll just find a different legal counsel, who also told him like, no, you have to let that person back. I I didn't, I didn't. So sessions, basically, your your meetings have to be uh, open. Uh, to the general public unless specific exemptions imply. There are a couple where, um, you you've got complaints against public employees or public officials. Or you're reviewing the applicant of our job applications, if those people ask for a closed session, you may go into closed session. You're not necessarily required to, but you may wanna do so to a- avoid violating their privacy. Other common exceptions that you go into closed session for require two-thirds roll call vote of the members. Not just those present, but all members, so for example, tonight, when we go into closed session later, Jan technically counts as a no. It's an abstention, but like her vote counts as a no, you still need two-thirds of seven. In order to go into closed session, to consult with your attorney regarding trial settlement strategy and specific pending litigation. Or to consider material exempt from disclosure, and oftentimes, we do that. For attorney-client privilege, memos, letters, opinions, that's what we're doing tonight, because those are exempt from. Disclosure by the Freedom of Information Act.
And are you aware that they're trying to expand it just slightly? Yes, that was.
Yeah, that would be really nice.
Yeah, the MTA has something, um, it's the lame duck session.
Yep.
Right now in Lansing, and their, the MTA Michigan Township Association has endorsed a particular expansion of the closed session. Uh, ruling, and it's would be to our, you know, everyone's advantage to be able to have a bit more flexibility to go into a closed session. So I already wrote a encouragement to our representative to approve that.
Fantastic, it it does give you more flexibility, for example, one of the things it does is is it's not just specific pending litigation. But specific threatened litigation, because there are often times where I will get nasty emails, or Howard will get a nasty email from an attorney, like. We're gonna sue you for this, that, and the other thing, we haven't yet been sued. But it would be nice to be able to go in and talk to you, like, hey, we should probably resolve this, because if you do get sued, you'll lose. Versus waiting to actually get sued and start running up more fees.
And and I just wanna pile up on, when you do get a advocacy action. Um, email from the MTA, I would strongly encourage you to take a moment to read it. And respond to the appropriate senator or representative, because it's critical for them to hear from us. Uh, I I went to a training on Tuesday, a couple of things have passed, only because that there's been local. Uh, influence and input on the bills, there's more bills going through this crazy lame duck session. The this period, the short little period, than they approved the entire year. This is absolutely crazy, I have another word in my mind, but I won't use it, but it is, so. There has to be in some sense an immediate response, you know, to the point where. There was going to be a blanket ruling to only allow one point five parking places per residential home across all zoning districts. It made no no sense, no, it was probably presented by some urban situation, but yet. The townships have to respond to those craziness, because it gets passed and we go like, what the heck happened?
Correct.
So that's, yeah, this is one of them that, yeah, if you see those MTA alerts, please just pull a note to our representative.
As I mentioned, your authority comes from the state statutes, and and there are times when the the state government will preempt you. Um, and and there have been attempts to do that on on certain hot topics, such as short-term rentals. That have failed, and so it does become important for you guys to advocate for local control. Yes.
Is it more impressive to send it as a board member or as a person?
I would recommend that you actually do both. Uh, I would send two, to be honest with you, because they 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 might think board member great. And I I think they will, that holds a little more weight than just an average resident, because board members do vote. But to see it both ways, they might not realize that you are one and two, and they might count that as, well, we've got. You know, two hundred and fifty-two comments instead of really two hundred and fifty-one.
Uh, I I'll respond, the question was asked on Tuesday.
Okay.
And Judy, the lead lobbyist for the MTA, said, um. If you were to say trustee or clerk or supervisor, that means it has significant weight. Because we have been elected by our peers and our neighbors. And so, um, I would respectfully agree that the weight of the the title actually does mean substantially more. Than if it was just a resident, uh, just because you've been elected and represent a community, so, but, uh.
Yeah.
But 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 response period is is critical.
And I would still encourage you to write it twice. One other closed session purpose, which requires a two-thirds roll call vote, is to go into closed session to consider purchasing or leasing. Real property up until the time you get an option or a contract put in place. It does not include going into closed session and discuss selling real property. So if you're gonna sell your property, you you work with your agent or whatever, um, and and you can't go into closed session. Closed session has separate minutes that are kept, um, that next one just kind of talks about what's supposed to be in them. Uh, but what I really wanna point out is that those minutes are kept, uh, basically for like a a year and a day. They're not available to the public, they're only disclosed if there is a court action. Claiming that you violated the Open Meetings Act. And then the judge will look at them in a closed session of the judge to find out whether or not you violated the Open Meetings Act. Um, and the reason I'm pointing that out is because if you disclose. Them, you're you're violating the Open Meetings Act. And you could be held criminally or civilly liable for unlawfully disseminating closed session minutes. So, for example, we're gonna be going into closed session later tonight. Closed session, I apologize for this, it's like Vegas, what happens there should stay there, you you shouldn't be talking to other people about it at all. Other violations of the Open Meetings Act could also have criminal and civil penalties. Uh, intentional violations are misdemeanors, where you'll get fined for the first offense, no jail time for the first offense. But the second offense, you could be imprisoned for ninety-three days. An intentional violation means that you, as a trustee or a planning commission member or ZBA member. Actually violated the OMA and you intended to do so, I've been successful in getting one client out of. Court by basically saying they're an idiot, they didn't intentionally violated it, they just negligently. Accidentally violated it, the prosecutor backed off and required training for that particular board. Uh, this is just one recent case dealing with the township in Michigan that went through the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals. Uh, about three years ago, where the township had to pay over a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in legal fees. Because a board member violated the Open Meetings Act. The other potential penalty, if you will, is that any decision you made in violation of the Open Meetings Act could be invalidated. So we're gonna go over FOIAs real quick and certain basics and certain definitions. Um, it's, uh, again, this idea for the public policy that we want people to be informed in their decision-making. Both the Open Meetings Act and the Freedom of Information Act were enacted in nineteen seventy-six, I believe. Following a certain president who assured you he was not a crook. Um, and so as a result of that, we want more transparency in government. That includes people having the ability to inspect, copy, or receive copies of public records. It is pro-disclosure. So that basically means if you have any writing that you as a board member. Or township staff member have prepared, owned, used, possessed, or retained while performing an official function. That is a public record. Writing is very, very broad, meaning basically anything in a recorded format, it could be handwritten. Type written, computer, email, text messages, et cetera. The key issue is, is it really an official function? So if you are doing something, even on your township computer, that is. Your own, not official function, but a a private type of thing, that isn't necessarily a public record. Um, e- examples might be like spam mail that you might get, I I don't know about you guys, but I still get spam mail from various things. This time of year, you might be using your township computer to do shopping for Christmas, and the next thing you know, you're getting advertisements from. Kohl's, Best Buy, Target, what have you, those are not public records. If you're using your private computer for township business, those are public records. Um, it is, and there's gonna be a slide later that shows it, it's really the content of the record, not the conduit. Like, is it being used for official public purposes? So if you're talking about a particular planned unit development, if you're talking about acquiring the Coast Guard Station. If you're talking about the pivot ball courts, and you're talking with anybody. In any of those email, text messages, recording types of ways, those are gonna be public records. And if somebody submits a FOIA request for them, you have to give them a copy of it, unless an exemption applies. Certain exemptions that are typical is a clearly unwarranted invasion of privacy. Um, that's sometimes a hard thing to meet, uh, for example, we will often get requests for. Personnel records. Uh, somebody might wanna see, and I apologize this, Howard, but I'm gonna use you as the example, that just means maybe tomorrow you get a FOIA request for it. I'm gonna submit a FOIA request for the township manager's personnel file. People can do that. What then happens is the FOIA coordinator, who might be Howard, he, because it's for him, he's gonna have to have somebody else do this. Because of the conflict of interest, they would go through that to find out, is there anything within there that is truly embarrassing, intimate, private, or confidential? Such as social security numbers, things of that sort. It doesn't automatically apply to personnel records, they're not automatically private. Doesn't apply to complaints, doesn't apply to discipline, because you are public employees, you are public officers, the public has a right to know about all of those things. They don't have a right to know your home address. They don't have a right to know your home phone number, but oftentimes township trustees hand that out.
So, one of the things that will happen in the office, and you may run into this as elected officials. Is we'll indicate to an individual that they, uh, they're asked, they ask for information and we'll indicate that they need to send one FOIA request. They are taken back by that, um, they think we should just be given, or they should just be given the information. One of the things I wanna make sure that everybody is aware of, and that the public is also aware of, is the FOIA law is there. Is the is the legal process to get the information. Us asking anybody to submit a FOIA request is not in any way, shape, or form. Us trying to be rude, or us trying to put up any kind of barriers, it is in fact. The reason that they are able to access that information, and it allows us to make sure that we have a record. We know what they are asking for, and also that we are able to charge appropriate cost for them to get those records. So anytime that happens, if, for example, you're talking to a constituent, and they come and say, hey, well, they didn't give me what I want, they wanted me to fill out this FOIA request. That's not, um, that's not our intention to be rude or disrespectful, that is the law and the process. Not to say that there are some things that we don't just give, not counter, um, but but generally, since it's any. Uh, substantial information, we'll ask for them to.
Yeah, or advise them where they might be able to find it online, for example, correct. Uh, and there's a timeframe within which you have to respond to FOIA requests, you've got five business days for your initial response, which could include granting it. for your initial response, which could include granting it, denying it, or extending by an additional ten business days, your ultimate response. Which then, a total of fifteen business days, essentially about three weeks, you either tell somebody you're gonna grant it, grant it in part and deny it in part, or deny it. And if there's even a partial denial or whole denial, then they have the right to appeal, and that would come to the board as the head of a public body on the appeal. So there's a check and balance there. Another exemption, although I generally don't have clients do this because of the balancing test that you'll see in a moment, is what's referred to as the frank advisory communications exemption. And that's basically any communications or notes within a public body or between public bodies and, um, employees that is advisory nature before a decision to the extent that it covers other than purely factual material. Uh, so like basically sharing opinions. The idea behind it is you might wanna have frank communications with one another. And 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 you as board members have to be careful. Like, you could individually have it with Howard, but you can't have that frank communication with one another because you're gonna be violating the Open Meetings Act on the deliberations piece. You direct your communication through Howard and say, Howard, I think we should do X, Y, or Z on the pickleball courts, the park township, community park, what have you. They're advisory, you're making suggestions, you're making recommendations. But there's this balancing test that the courts are gonna apply. And that is that you, as the township, the public body, has the burden to show in that particular instance of whatever that record is, that your desire to engage in those frank communications outweighs the public's interest in the disclosure of those deliberations. And that can yield varying results where sometimes the court says yes, and sometimes the court says no, there are examples right here of each of those, and all of those things cost you money. And they cost you money because I I I don't work unless I get paid. I I apologize for that. I'm an attorney. We 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 come to these meetings for fifty dollars. Um, but when I go to court, it's the normal meter that's running. And so when you have to go to court, it becomes expensive. And there's all of the discovery and all of those other things that start adding up in those costs. So if you wanna run that risk, and if you lose a a FOIA appeal at Circuit Court Court of Appeals, you're gonna be obligated to pay the other side's attorney's fees. Normally in Michigan, you don't have to pay the other side's fees, but under FOIA, if the requister is a prevailing party, they not only get the record, but you have to pay their attorney's fees for basically forcing them through court to get that record. And that becomes expensive. There's no specific email exemption. Um, if if you're gonna write an email to anybody other than basically me as the township attorney, and really you guys shouldn't be writing me emails. I I typically only have communications with the supervisor and the manager. Occasionally, the clerk on election issues, sometimes the treasurers. Trustees, no. There was a time in the township where a couple trustees kept sending me emails, and the township board said, no, because that costs us money. You need to direct anything through the manager. And in that situation, I recommend you call the manager or you call the supervisor to get their authority to reach out to me. Uh, and I say call them, because if you send them an email, that could be subject to disclosure. Uh, this is that slide I'm saying, the the determination of whether something's a public record or not is based on what the content is, not the conduit. So it might be, you know, Dan Martin at Park Township dot org email that I'm using, which I don't think I have. Okay, good. Because I think at one time somebody might have created one for me, and I wasn't ever looking at those emails. Like, uh, just because it's there, it's spam, that doesn't mean it's a public record. And if you're using a Gmail account, and I have clients, school districts, board members that wanna use Gmail accounts, thinking that that's somehow gonna keep them out of FOIA, it doesn't. That just means that somebody is gonna be looking through all of your private emails to find out which ones are content related to the public and which ones are private. And that's gonna feel like a big invasion of your privacy. And these are other general types of exemptions. Uh, but I'm happy to answer other questions, and I apologize for how long, but I did wanna be thorough. I encourage you guys to to look to the MTA. The MTA does put out books. I bring one with me to every meeting. The Little Red Book, although I think it's a little bigger now. They have books specific about supervisor, clerk, treasurer, and trustees. And I think it's probably about fifty bucks. Um, and my guess is the township would would buy those books for you if you asked Howard.
Questions or?
If someone's at public comment and won't sit down and keep talking, what do you do?
What I would recommend do is is banging the gavel. Um, and if if they continue not to go down after you banged the gavel, and I've seen that at a school board meeting, I think it was up in Grand Haven, where somebody was reading a little bit that they thought was pornographic. And so they just kept reading. After the three minutes, the gavel was being struck, and after about fifteen seconds, they sat down. If not, you guys have a law enforcement officer. I've seen the situation where the law enforcement officer stands up and walks towards them, and then they go down. Um, if they continue, and if the law enforcement officer believes that a breach of peace is being committed, they could be removed from that meeting and potentially charged for a breach of the peace.
Just as far as, uh, best practices in communication between board and manager, uh, what do you recommend, Dan?
If if you want a public record that would be subject to FOIA email, uh, you know, sometimes we'd like to have public records. Um, otherwise, call Howard on the phone. A text message, a lot of people think that text messages is like the call. Text message is like an email. An email is like a letter. Those are records of the actual content of the conversation. Some people want those records when they they feel like they might not be able to trust what the other side is saying, that the words might get twisted.
So verbal.
Verbal if you're not wanting to create a record. I honestly, I once had a client send me an email, and I laugh at this. This was more than twelve years ago. It was, it was an email that said, draft of letter told me not to write. Like, well, now you created the public record I didn't want you to create.
Well, I I just wanna go on record to my colleagues. Uh, I'm available, my my hours that I'm trying to adhere to are, uh, Monday and Wednesday mornings generally. And so if you wanna talk to me and or meet for breakfast or lunch or something on those Monday, Wednesday through noon, uh, please do. Uh, but, uh, that's that's kind of my verbal uh, availability area, face-to-face availability. So please, uh, take advantage of that. And, uh, um, and Howard, obviously, all the time, all the time, every day. Well, with some restraint, I hope.
It's all the time every day.
And Howard and the chief have my phone number, uh, private and in public. And so if someone comes up that I need to go at, Jim knows this, you get the call. So it's like he passed that all over to me now. So thank you. Thank you, Jim. All right. Yeah, please.
It's, uh, I have a township cellphone, um, always, always, uh, call the township cellphone. If for whatever reason you don't reach me, it's, uh, Lauren sometimes will know, my township cellphone will be off or, uh, whatever. You're welcome to call my cellphone, my personal cellphone as well. Just don't text. I'm a person's cellphone. You text, it's a chip phone, it's a record. Um, so just be aware of that. Um, you you should all have my numbers. Um, and Steve will also have my wife's number if he needs to get ahold of me. The chief also has my wife's number.
And I know Danielle, if you remember the questions you asked me, because I don't know that I answered them, i- it felt like when or who signs an ordinance. The the ordinance, it isn't required to be signed specifically by anybody. Uh, we typically have the clerk and the supervisor, because again, the supervisor is the legal agent, the clerk is the keeper of records. I don't think the the statute specifically require it to be signed by any particular time or person. The clerk is required to keep a certificate. The ordinances have to be published within thirty days. So typically, we're gonna have them sign. And again, it's not a legal requirement, but we usually use the supervisor and the clerk sign within that thirty days and publish within that thirty-day time period. And then the certificate can kind of go along with that, just in case anybody is, needs a certificated copy. We also sometimes encourage getting an affidavit of publication from the newspaper, just to prove that it has in fact been published, so you have that for your records.
We do that. Uh, for every ordinance, there's an affidavit. Uh, we keep the affidavit of publication for all of our, just to prove it. And if for whatever reason you lose that affidavit of publication, you can actually call the newspaper and get a copy of that affidavit. So, and that is, um, that is a function of newspapers. For those of you who are probably thinking, well, it's why are we advertising things to newspapers anymore? The MTA, um, if the clerk, uh, and supervisor wanna take up that issue, the MTA has been trying for about a part of decades to change both laws. Um, those laws are still in effect, probably mostly because of the newspaper lobby. Those are, those are, um, good, uh, revenue sources for newspapers. I believe that law was changed, but there's like a ten-year, uh, a ten-year phase into it. Uh, and this is kind of vague memory from a number of years ago, Dan, but I think there's something in there that like in the next fifteen years or so, we can start advertising online. Um, but it's not in, it's not in effect yet, and and they they've worked on that for years.
Dan, thanks for that update. And, uh, we already learned how to push it back. Maybe we got, uh, full agenda here before we did the closed session. Um, so let's, uh, let's, uh, get going. Uh, asking item number or letter A, twenty-five thousand, three, um, Connie and Howard have put together this, and this goes, uh, fresh to our recent packet. So we do wanna talk about it, but Connie or Howard, you wanna speak to this?
Yeah, quickly, and Connie, if you wanna come up to the dais and help, we'll, we'll put it. Um, I'll quick give a a quick summary. You've got a lot of information in front of you. Um, we did, uh, we did a lot of benchmarking, uh, or at least we tried to do a lot of benchmarking for, uh, this analysis. What we found is, uh, ironically, that most communities here do really not understand what it means to be in compliance with the hard cap. So initially, when Connie sent out her, um, her survey, we got responses back that said, yeah, we're in compliance with the hard caps and we're looking at the numbers. And I'm saying to myself, there's no possible way that they're in compliance with the hard cap based on these numbers. So we dug deeper. Um, and it turns out that, you know, it depends on who you talk to, the local municipality, right? It's whether or not they really understand what it means to be in compliance with PA one fifty-two. What we have found is that we in fact are quite lagging behind. Um, on page sixty-six of your packet, you'll see in that, uh, in that box, um, that, uh, the ones that we have been able to make it a a true apples-to-apples comparison, uh, those are the numbers that we're seeing. Um, uh, the, and and when I, and the reason why I say it's sometimes difficult to make a true apples-on-apples comparison is we have, we are, uh, our health insurance is through the West Michigan Health Insurance Pool. Okay, we are not on the private market. Because we are in the pool, we are considered a small group under the pool. So we submit our, um, uh, information, uh, in a given year, and they come back with our rates. Um, those rates are based on, uh, a single, double, and family. The rates, uh, those rates are based on the way that the state does it, which is, which is typical for local municipal government pools and also, uh, in in the, uh, school world as well. But some of these communities are going direct to the market. They'll go through a broker like a a a Berens Hendricks or a Gallagher or uh, any number of brokers, health insurance brokers in the state and nationally. And those will go direct to, um, Priority Health and Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they'll quote you the business. Now, some of those plans are not quoted based on single, double, family. They're quoted based on either an individual census and sometimes it's age bandit. So somebody who's fifty-five will have the health insurance, uh, cost of it taxed, and somebody who's fifty-six will be slightly more. And so there are, there 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 were situations in which it was very difficult for us to create that true apples-to-apples comparison. And in some instances, we just didn't have enough information in order to get down to that level of granularity. But for those that we did, we believe that the numbers that you see there on page sixty-six are accurate. And it turns out that over the last, uh, four or five years, even though we've asked every year who's under the hard caps, and everybody says we're complying with PA one fifty-two, and under the hard caps, um, I'm not sure that it's totally accurate. Um, we we have found that Grand Haven Township is not in compliance. Um, now, that doesn't mean they're doing anything wrong. They've elected not to be in compliance with PA one fifty-two. So they've, they're they're, they've had a resolution that says that they're not gonna be in compliance with PA one fifty-two and go over the hard cap numbers or over the eighty-twenty splits. Like Town Township is similar. Uh, Holland Township is in compliance with PA one fifty-two, but they're under the eighty-twenty section of law. So PA one fifty-two provides you with hard cap numbers, single family double, or single double family. Or it says, municipal can be in compliance and give whatever health insurance they want, but the employees have to pay twenty percent. So in case Holland Charter Township, the employee's paying twenty percent, the amount that Holland Charter Township is still paying is over and above what we provide for our employees. All that to be said is, I would suggest and recommend, uh, a subsidy for this upcoming year. Um, and, um, I would, uh, uh, defer to Connie on that to explain, uh, some of the subsidies that she's given. She's given like three or four possibilities of what you might do. And then I would lastly say, uh, we have new board members, we have a new clerk. Typically, health insurance is something that, uh, 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 the clerk and the manager would work on jointly uh, with, you know, a finance director. Uh, and so if you guys so choose, this may be an opportunity to say, hey, we like the the pool. Generally speaking, being in the pool is the best way to go because you're with a bunch of other lives. But that's not to say that we shouldn't make sure that the pool is competitive and maybe put it, honestly, put it, put it out for bid and see what is out there. And that might be a good exercise for us to do in the upcoming year, maybe over the next four, five months or so. With that, Connie, would you go and explain the options?
Sure. So basically, there's two approaches that I've put down here to give you some idea of what it would cost. The first was in your packet last, um, last, at the last meeting, and that's looking at bringing the hard cap up in line with what the actual increases in the premium are. So in option one, it goes retroactive back to when we started using the hard caps. And then option two is just looking at increasing the, uh, amount just on the this year's premium. So the other, um, suggestion that we had was to set a minimum contribution to the HSA A account based on the deductible, and that's a little more straightforward. I've given you some options. Um, that's all they are. Maybe contributing at least, may having a minimum contribution of twenty-five percent or a minimum contribution of fifty percent.
The HSA often, I'd lean more towards the fifty percent. Um, initially, I was leaning towards kind of the middle uh, position earlier, which was about nineteen to twenty thousand dollar subsidy. Looking at these numbers, it might even go a little bit higher, uh, and go with, uh, the subsidy, if you were fund fifty percent of everybody's HSA, would be twenty-nine thousand dollars for the township for the upcoming year. If you were to fund twenty-five percent of everybody's HSA, you're looking at what, like thirteen, fourteen thousand? Is that accurate? Thanks. So with that, um, it is really a policy decision. I have to be very careful. I do represent and advocate for the rest, for the, 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 uh, the employees. I will say, I think our health insurance numbers are a bit low at this point. Um, and so I would advocate for something, but at that point, I have to also uh, understand that I advocate for a good use of tax, the spending taxpayer resources. So.
Okay, so Howard has, Howard and Connie have, uh, you might wanna stay for a moment just if there's a question or two. Uh, Connie and Howard have developed a couple of options for us. Uh, is there, I have to admit, I don't have the, uh, expertise to dig into it, make a recommendation other than hear what he is saying, that we are uh, not quite competitive. So I I I, we need to take care of our teammates and treat them well. But is there any suggestion, uh, a way forward?
I'm just trying to, can I ask a question first? Um, so one of the reasons we got into this pool was because it was less expensive. So some of these townships are not in this pool. So are they paying more because they're getting better coverage?
Or are they paying more because they're not in the pool?
Uh so when you look, so we we looked at the coverages too and it so if you go to page sixty five, you'll see the coverages. And generally speaking, all of the communities have better coverage. Um now, it's not to say that if that's the case all over West Michigan, these are the communities we looked at. I would kind of just gut check me, I would say generally speaking of all the communities that we have in that spreadsheet on page sixty five. We probably are at the bottom. Would you agree? Yeah, so we have the lowest coverages. Now, your point is well taken, Jim, and that's actually one of the reasons why I'm saying maybe now's the time, who've been in the pool for three years?
Not sure exactly.
About that. Um maybe four, uh maybe now's the time potentially to say, hey, let's go see what the private market looks like and just make sure that. We're getting rates.
How does this spreadsheet determine what coverage is? I mean, that's I'm looking at the spreadsheet and it says nothing about what is covered.
But well, I mean, we assume that you, when you say what is covered, you mean like.
There's a lot of different types of insurance policies. So do we have any understanding of what some of these other townships and municipalities insurance policies are? If we don't, we don't.
We don't.
Okay, okay. So, okay, so.
Most communities are going to high deductible HSA plans and high deductible HSA plan. Not hundred percent, but generally about the same in house.
Yeah.
Now.
That 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 I mean. There's a lot of different. Okay, so just under the board just needs to understand, there's a lot of difference here. We really, to be quite honest, we still really don't know what other municipalities are doing. So let's just be clear that we don't know.
Yes.
And I and that's all I wanna, that's all I wanna say. We don't know, so we can't say we are lower because we really don't know what the other municipalities have.
From a from a like, you know, like the like, yes, you're right. So like what you're saying is like, do they pay eighty percent if you're in network, it's plus seventy percent if you're in network? Are they allowing you to go to a cardiologist? Do they get a colonoscopy for free part of the plan? Yes, so you're absolutely right. We didn't get to that model of of uh a detail of give us your complaints.
So. And 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 that's fine, so I think I think we just need to uh but you implied. That we are not supplying as good of insurance as others and we just don't know that.
We don't know that one hundred percent, everything's pointing to that direction.
Based on what?
Based on these, most of these communities are, if you look at these, they're 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 putting monies into the HSA accounts. And generally, when under the ACA plan, when they go to HSA accounts or high deductible HSA account. Generally, those ACA plans are pretty standard. And so um and if you look at the contribution, if you look at the amounts of money that township. Is spending as it relates to the other communities, we're showing that we're spending less. Than the other communities, so we're spending seven thousand, sixteen thousand, twenty one thousand. And also, when you look at the more the detail, how much is their HSA? How much does the employee match and those kind of things, we're also at the at at the bottom. But you are correct, we did not get um we did not get enough time and enough detail to get to the plan level as well. So that is a missing link. I think that what I could say is. It's it's looking like it's going in that direction pretty pretty strongly, but you are correct. It could just be that they're getting, they're they're on the private market, so they get higher costs than we do because we're in the pool. I doubt that it's it's that much of a difference. But but you're right, I think there's more research to be done.
On page sixty seven, under the set of minimum const- contribution to HSA accounts based on the deductible. Um if you look at the third line, it says, it should be noted that employee payroll deductions for health insurance have remained flat. Can you speak to that?
Sure, well, we ask the employees, do you want a higher contribution to your HSA or do you want to keep your? Or your every payroll deduction lower? And they opted to do every payroll lower. So that's part of the reason, but I think because of the overall cost is also lower, it would suggest the uh a lesser plan in total.
One thing we can do if the board wishes is we.
Okay, so well, I'm just I'm just trying to understand, so we've taken away benefits each year to keep the premiums at the same level? Does that make sense? No?
No, so the way we do health insurance is we have an amount of money that we get to spend. And township gets to spend that amount of money, the the employees essentially get to spend that amount of money and we try to get the best coverage we can. We have two options, we have a two thousand, four thousand plan and a three thousand, six thousand plan. So the two thousand, four thousand is you stay in network. You have a two thousand dollar deductible if you're single, four thousand if you're a double or a family and three thousand versus six thousand. And so what the employees were saying was, hey, we'd rather have less money in our HSA. Okay, and and keep the payroll deductions low. So from their perspective, we let them make those decisions because ultimately we've got the amount of money that we're spending. That the township is spending. So if the employees want more money in their HSA and more money to come out of their uh payroll deductions. It really doesn't impact what we or you as a board are giving us in terms of a benefit. And so it's really not a function of our coverage, our coverage hasn't changed. The plan is still two thousand, four thousand, three thousand, six thousand. And the plan itself is an ACH uh uh a Ford uh American uh what's that, American?
ACA?
The ACA ACA plan is it's 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 an ACA compliant plan. That has not changed, plans have.
Okay, okay.
Um and the other thing I was gonna say is we can we can postpone again and and do more research, which is fine. Uh if we wanted to go and 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 check the plans.
I don't, I don't need that personally.
Okay.
But I just wanted to be clear. What? I don't know that everyone understood. Okay, and and that was. It that it that we're not being cheap as a township, we just don't know. Okay, so I just I just wanted to be clear that there's a big difference between going in a pool. And going to the private sector or private market and saying, well, we just want to do this. So that's that's all, that's the only point I was making, no other point than that. I don't necessarily need more research, but let's just. Have a good understanding of what's being said, that's all.
Yeah, appreciate that.
So between be- between Connie and Howard, uh what what HSA? Model are you suggesting for us to have?
I would suggest somewhere between the twenty five percent and fifty percent. You know, the twenty five percent, the HSA level of the twenty five percent, you've got a thirteen thousand dollar um uh subsidy. We give everybody a minimum twenty five percent deductible in their HSA, so we've got a two thousand, four thousand. And a three thousand, six thousand. So, you know, the two thousand, four thousand is going to be a little lesser in the HSA than the three thousand, six thousand, so we have to kind of run those. Those those figures and appropriate it appropriately, but that there would be a minimum twenty five percent um uh HSA deductible there. Uh and then a minimum fifty percent uh yeah, HSA deductible there. And so I would I would go somewhere probably between the twenty five and the. And so it's really a question of how much the board wants to.
Want to throw out a number?
I would probably say, you know, twenty five thousand dollar subsidy in total. That was a little bit higher than last month's at nineteen thousand nine thirty eight. Got a little bit more information, so I'd say, you know, maybe give it an extra five thousand dollars to be split. Hey. A little bit of a difference, twenty five thousand subsidy total. But this year, this year only, and then do a lot more.
Well, we've talked about this for two months, I'd like to put this behind us personally.
Yes.
And I would like to recommend that we, you know, take your advice and put a team together and and then test the market. And get more information. So I hear Jim's concern that we haven't, we really don't know. So uh do we hear a motion? And I'd like to suggest a motion would be add a particular number like Mr. There, Mr. Finks, Manager Finks recommends. But also it's a caveat that we research that for the next six months. Would someone be willing to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion. Um I'll make a motion that we use um that the contribution we give to the employees. Is to contribute to the HSA accounts um to a total of twenty five thousand to be divided equally me equally among the. All right, uh I'll just say appropriately between the single uh double and family. Um such that everyone gets an equal amount. How about that? Support.
Okay, so any more further discussion on this before we take a vote? During that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And then uh I it doesn't require a board vote, but I would encourage you to take the uh the project to investigate uh off with. And let's go forward.
Alright, thank you.
Now the next thing, B, boy, uh we gotta get to I, B, B, alright, B, permit fees, this should be quick.
Yeah, quickly, uh Mr. Supervisor, uh electrical and mechanical inspectors have indicated uh. Need for increasing costs, it's just standard that this has been happening and relations being going on. These individuals are subcontractors to the township, other communities have increased these fees and so. You know, we try to, we try to stay uh consistent uh in the area.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fees as noted.
Discussion?
Um Supervisor, if I may?
Please.
How long is our services been provided? Have we ever gone out and done competitive quote? With regard to, I mean, is the same company taking care of these matters the last dozen years? Or are they've been on board for the last five? And should we look at competitive costing at all?
Probably the the. The the answer is no and yes, should we look at competitive costing? Yes, we should always look at competitive costing. It is really difficult to find those factors. Um there's a shortage of inspectors out there, um and so uh it it. I think it's gonna be a little bit of a the challenge to identify people to uh do it for less. Now, um the electrical inspector is new. When we, when the previous electrical inspector, Gord Bosch, retired. Um we didn't just immediately take this recommendation of who he was bringing forward, we looked at, we looked at a few people. Um and Chad kind of did his due diligence and researched on it. Uh certainly uh defer to uh Trustee Cerny, who is an expert in this area. Uh when it comes to your mechanical and plumbing inspector, uh it is um. Uh Madreski, Bob Madreski, thank you. Um and Bob is unique because he actually holds both licenses. He holds plumbing and mechanical, which is pretty rare.
Those nine brief, you're not, you're not gonna find them anymore.
Yeah, so I mean, always a good idea to cost, you know, cost, but. This one may not be one that you would chase, at least initially. Trustee Sir. It comes, he's a electrical.
That's very true and going back to the plumbing and mechanical, the way the state changed things. You can't find one with both anymore, so you'd have to hire two. Um however, I think this ninety dollars is very high. That'd be the highest inspection fee in Ottawa County if not all of Kent, Muskegon and over. Um and we just increased your fees, what was it, six months ago? Wasn't that long ago we increased them. So I would be more comfortable with. I can tell you Hudsonville is fifty and other areas are seventy five, I think this ninety dollars is very high.
I'm happy to close the call and do some research for the next meeting. If that's the board wishes.
We uh we do have a, uh we do have a motion on the floor if I recall. So so uh. Did we have a motion or not? Yeah, we did.
Yes, we did.
We have a motion. Yeah, yeah, uh uh may I suggest that we uh the motion is retracted and thrown back to the the man to do more research? Totally fine, I like to retract the motion. And second?
Second.
Second, okay, alright, Dave, alright, back to you. Okay, I'm announcing. Good questions. Thank you, Dar, Lauren. A uh banking depository resolutions, these are done every year. Uh Connie, do you need to speak to this or is this this routine?
It's routine.
Routine, these are the banks we use, institutions we use. And this is something that Joan has to sign every year. And. Yes. Any questions or comments on that? Alright, so you know, motion to pass, I'll make a motion, take a motion to pass this, the the banking resolution. Support. Questions, comments? Alright, see you then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. D, uh budget adjustment. So uh you received a budget adjustment. Is there anything Connie or Howard in brief that you would like to uh highlight? Uh this is something for the new members, Joan in charge, trustees, uh it is something that happens twice a year generally. Uh that these are brought forth and so this is just uh balancing the books again. And any, oh, any, no comments? Alright, um let's see, also was it, it's a motion, right?
Yes.
I hear Jim's motion to approve. I'll second that. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll vote. Alright, motion passes. Great, thank you Connie for keeping us clean and balanced. Uh Board of Review appointments, reappointments, I should say, uh appointments but reappointments. Uh. This would be on the assessment side, so this is from the assessor. Uh. So, yeah, I did realize that's actually a brother.
Yeah, right, I've been through all, um the the we put through, um you know, we put through the uh um term limits. Um and so some of these, actually Linda and and David uh are are after their term limits, but but we're allowing them to be uh uh. Soft landing, if you will, because otherwise we'd we'd be taking out the board the whole time, right? So um these are, these are how I can't recommendations of the Board of Review appointments. For those of you who don't know, you folks, Board of Review is the entity that uh is the board. Uh if you decide you want to appeal your taxes and appeal values around uh what we believe your homes are worth and and. Uh your SaaS values and and your your taxable values. So um these are the individuals that look at that and say, hey, um no, we believe that the comps show that your home is in factually worth something or not. Um common common uh refrain is, yeah, if you think it's worth three hundred thousand, not great, I'd love to buy it today. And then somebody says, oh, not so. But anyway, so um.
There's a little weird there.
Uh but yeah, recommended.
So Supervisor, I've got a question and it's more on the learning side, Howard, you probably addressed it partially. Um these are for two-year terms? Are they staggered?
Yes.
Okay, because we don't have the information on here and when they expire, okay.
The system is staggered, um and 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 so, yes.
Okay.
Good question, thank you. Okay, make uh someone make a motion to approve.
Support.
Alright, hold up, okay, you're making a motion, Sharpe making the motion, you make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. I'll make suggestions for the board members as listed on this document.
Thanks, sir.
Support.
Alright, support, right? Discussion? See you then, alright, I'll in favor of this, these three volunteers, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion passes, thank you for those three volunteers to do that. Alright, uh speed trailer quotes. So this is something that Howard and the team, uh Officer Jeff, we get Jones, would like to uh speak to. Uh yeah. I think it's a pretty exciting opportunity for us to slow our folks down. So you want to speak to that?
Absolutely, uh we certainly have some structural issues with speeding uh that keeps us from being able to address it really well. Uh such as Ottawa Beach Road, it's a big wide road, right? Uh it's also has a lot of people coming and going, they aren't from the area, they don't know that we're sitting out there all the time writing tickets. So the the ways we can address that is through education, right? So the, the ways we can address that is through education, right? And that's the speed trailers. The speed trailers we can put out on Ottawa Beach Road. When people are going down the road thinking it's a fifty-five mile an hour road, because it's kind of the way it feels, right? When you drive down that road, they get this signal from the sign that has them slowed down. It also allows us to record the speed of vehicles, all the vehicles coming through. Uh, so that we know which areas are a real problem and which necessarily aren't. Um, so those are really important for us. We've, I've seen in several areas where neighborhoods requested them. And we put them in there and not just people seeing it, they realized, though, this is a twenty-five. Because actually, a lot of the residential areas, there's no speed limit signs there, uh, so people wouldn't know. Uh, the other component that's added in there is the speed laser, laser measuring device. Um, there's only one right now for Park Township, and if we get more, we could have more enforcement. It's difficult to use radar on Ottawa Beach Road, because that doesn't pinpoint a vehicle, uh, and there's too much traffic. But with a laser, you can do that. So that's the enforcement side of this.
In this case, you're, you're asking for two?
Two, yeah, correct. Two trailers and then one speed measuring device.
Mister Supervisor, I've got a couple questions. So, um. These will be randomly placed or can residents request they be placed?
Residents can request them. Um, in fact, it just occurs to me now, maybe we could put something on the website. Um, I know there's something on the Sheriff's Office website, but maybe Park Township could have it on their website as well.
Yeah, we get a lot of, Jeff and I.
Please.
Jeff and I, we get a lot of requests. We get emails that come through us, folks concerned about people going too fast in their neighborhoods. Those, those, those complaints generally come to my office. And one of our, uh, one of our uh, uh, effective tools of enforcement, not enforcement, effective tools of of education. Is put out the trailer, right? We cannot, uh, we're, we're very limited. Uh, if not, we have no uh, ability to move out the speed limits, uh, the actual uh, speed uh, that is posted. Um, but what we can do is put the trailer down. So Jeff will move the trailers to where he gets complaints or he and I will talk and I'll. Say, hey, get complaints in this area and we prepare it. Great suggestion to put it on the website and get it out there so people can, you know, send us uh, places that they want.
And these are for Park Township use? Would Ottawa County get access to them at all?
No, ma'am. They must be for use in Park Township.
Okay.
You, you mentioned two trailers, one laser measuring device?
Correct.
How, how does the laser measuring device get used?
Oh, that's for the actual enforcement. Um, so this isn't like, just to be clear, this isn't like a trailer that sends you a ticket in the mail with your picture of your car. It just records the speed, but then the speed laser measuring device, it's a handheld device, that a deputy can use that to actually do enforcement.
Got it.
Yep.
And that would be a part township?
Correct, only, only used in Park Township.
Okay. Is, is that laser measuring device capable to measure your, uh, the speed of electric bikes on bike paths?
Uh, R, R C cars, honestly, but yes, you could do, you could use that on a electric bike. That's true.
Well, we are, we do have an, uh, ordinance on speed of our electric bikes, so that.
Okay.
That's good to know, because there's certain folks that will probably be caught if that's.
Probably fair, yeah.
There, there you go. All right, any other comments?
I have one, um. He was running radar on Ottawa Beach Road and. I parked next to him and talked to him. They had a bunch of questions, so I interrupted his enforcement out there, but. I can vouch for these things, because a couple of years ago I had one in my front yard. I asked one to be put there. And if you remember, after it sat there for like a month or so, I sent the whole board. All the cars that went by and the speeds. And I tell you what, they work and people see them and I can see people slowing down, thinking, oh, this is a fifty-five. I'm in a forty-five on a hundred and sixty-eight. That beach traffic applies, they do. So they do work.
Thank you, thank you, trustee Cerny. Any other questions, comments? Sounds like a great idea. Thanks for that opportunity to do this. Uh, we have a code in front of us, the total, total number on the bottom, Howard, is fourteen thousand eight oh eight. And so we're two hundred and fourteen, comes out of the public safety fund, so we have a place to pull it out. So any motions on the floor, anybody? I'll make that motion. Lauren, thank you, Lauren, make a motion to approve the purchase?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all right, uh, all in favor of purchasing two machines plus a laser? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you. All right. Uh. Uh, the G, Farmland Preservation Board Member Appointment. We don't need to get into all the details, but we can just talk about the high level of what you're trying to do with that team.
Yep, high level, uh, on page eighty-five, right behind the memo, is uh, the committee that you guys approved, uh. Quite a while ago at this point. It's been a little bit over a decade, but um, we wanna try to get, uh, outreach out to Park Township and begin our. In farmland preservation, so just leave it at that. Um, but one of the things that we need to do is appoint a board member. Um, there's one individual in the community that has identified, um, who's who's willing to confirm that he would, uh, join us. Um, uh, but we do need a, a board member, planning commission member, and the folks that you see there, so. Recommend that, uh, Mr. Supervisor, uh.
Yep. Yeah, we, we, uh. This is a, a, a committee in its infancy in formation, and Howard is taking the lead of putting the team together. I did have a brief conversation with uh, trustee Cerny, who expressed an interest to be on this team, so I appreciate your willingness. He's nodding his head saying, I'm jumping on board. But again, you're not at a point where you're starting to meet yet, but uh, I think uh. Might, I'll see, started by hurt, by help recruiting, uh, members to this team, so.
I'm offering.
Excellent. Fantastic. So, uh, with that, I don't think we have to have a. Um, motion on a board appointment or, or committee appointment? Uh, I don't think. What I.
The board is going to be appointed somebody that should be in motion.
Oh, sure, okay, all right. So I'm, uh, make a motion that we appoint trustee Cerny to the Farmland Preservation Committee. Thank you. Thank you, Joe. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you, thank you, Lauren. All right, uh, historic hangar rentals, this is on the agenda, uh, I think last week or last month, uh, as far as the, the cost. So thanks for doing some research, Howard. So this is a recommendation of what it would cost to rent.
Yeah, um, Mr. I can, our record managers with us as well, uh, we were making, uh, the recommendations. Um, that you see there, um. This would be a new facility that the community would be able to rent and utilize, which is really excited to bring it online. Not, and it's not complete yet, but it will be. Completed by the time that the, these rental periods begin. Really quick note, we're not allowing, uh, weddings yet. But that doesn't mean that that's not what we're getting to. We are, that is in the works, or that is, we, we, we would like to see that happen. But there's more things that we need to think about when we have those kind of large functions, so. From now, we're, uh, asking for approval to, uh, be able to rent the facility. And which means that the board has to set those fees, um, with the coming up that weddings get. If, and that, the board may not ever want that, to have weddings there, that's, that's a discussion.
It's a type of party. Any, any comments or questions about rental of the hangar?
Just real quick, um, don't mean to get into the weeds, and if you don't want to get in the weeds, that's fine. Um, someone rents it on a Saturday, someone rents it on a Sunday. Who's checking it on Saturday?
Good question.
The way the mountain centers work right now, it is a hundred dollar fungal project, it is for them to clean up. Um, because they're positive, we have bad issues in the past, so if somebody's not cleaning up. Um, not a huge issue for the people that are coming on Sunday, we clean it and we take pictures. Um, but people on Saturday do not.
Okay, so someone from the township is not going to be checking on it on Saturday or Sunday morning before the next person comes?
That is not how we rent right now.
Okay, all right.
Okay, or trust system. Is there, is there gonna be some kind of electronic lock on it or something that if they rent it from a certain time, it only opens to that time?
Yes.
Okay.
Same lock system that we have in this building is being installed on, on the other building.
Okay. And there's the, there'll be some kind of monitoring, video monitoring, something, just in case something does go wrong?
Not video monitoring. But every time that door opens, uh, we can get a text message. So yes, there's a monitoring system to it.
Would we be out of line to put a security system slash video monitoring of some kind on it?
We can put a video, uh, camera, uh, um, I don't think there's, uh, I don't, I don't think that's on the land at all.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, but yeah, that's probably not a, uh.
I think especially if, to, to the point that was just made, if it's a Saturday, Sunday thing, right, well, something got damaged, well, who damaged it?
Sure.
Yeah, but we don't want to get into a finger pointing scenario.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I, if we're gonna have assets over there too, are we eventually gonna have sound systems and mics and anything that could be. Grow legs and walk away somehow?
Good point.
Or vandalism?
Yes.
We'll just be proactive in that.
Well, those, uh, uh, question, those bathrooms are going to be more open.
Yes, correct. Those bathrooms are gonna be publicly accessible. So what I would just ask, have the board do, and I don't think it needs to come to the board, I just, uh, as part of the motion, just give staff authorization. I have authorization, I think, up to ten thousand, but just give us authorization to, uh, spend to put in security cameras.
All right. Well, that's a suggestion of our, uh, it was a policy, uh, the vote for the rental, but the suggestion and comments about security makes sense. Would someone like to make a motion on that?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, rental as noted here with the addition of. The ability for Howard to. Employ or get a security system on there as well, uh, just to record events and make sure that we're being proactive.
I'd support that.
Motion on the floor, supported. Uh, any questions, comments?
I have one comment.
Please.
Um. The Fair Board is currently getting prices for security cameras, though. We're gonna, we're looking at about seven of them. And usually with something like that, the more you buy, the better deal you get. So, yeah, I'm thinking if we wanna go the same. You guys have a price for one. Um, I believe it's A, B, C, or internet label.
A, B, C.
A, B, C, they're.
That, E, C, is to put the security system.
Yeah, absolutely. The one that put all our internet in was Walters Electric, so. But yeah, we gotta get through Bulge and Oregon, our third bylaws, so. That's right, we're working on it, so just, we'll include another one.
All right, thank you, Lauren. All right, motion on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Good, motion passes. So we, we, I see, we, we moved something down for our colleague, uh, about the Cooper and Weren. But I see he's here already, so I will keep it on, on track here, would you like to speak?
Hey, welcome to your first meeting in your new position, and, and maybe Shar, I think, too, anybody else?
John.
Okay, welcome. Hey, well, thanks for having us here. It's been a pleasure working these trails, so I know, um.
Please introduce yourself to so we.
I'm sorry, Brian Stauffer, I know, I guess Brian, and not that many others, but, um, Brian Stauffer, working with Membah, the Michigan Edge Mountain Bike Association. Um, among other things, but, um, just really enjoyed having the privilege to work on this property out here. It's great. And so many people call it a well-kept secret out there, just waiting to, and, and people are out there using it with their dogs and walking, so it's been wonderful. Thanks. But I know one agenda item I think you had from previous was timing for the property being open and gate timing. And a recommendation we'd have would be to do it similar for night, for night riding during the winter time. To do it similar to what Ottawa County does with the Riley Street Trails, so seven AM to eight PM is what we recommend for the board to consider. And I guess Howard to implement then with the, whoever works on the timing of that gate.
Uh, did, just to expand a bit, uh, Ryan, about, uh, the, what's happening at night, what's going on with, uh, fat tire biking? Not all of the team might be aware of what.
Yeah.
Particulars.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a lot of vandals out there, no, no. Um, the, uh, the night biking is pretty popular for, um, mountain bike riders in the winter with fat tire bikes and snow. So earlier, um, Stephen Howard talked with, um, Kirk, who has, who does, Kirk Walters does fat tire, fat grooming for bike trails. It's just a real hot thing to, um, in fact, Riley Trails, a few years ago, was rated second highest used nighttime mountain biking, riding, um, trail set. So we got some competition to shoot for there, but people love, it's, it's a cool thing to go around the woods. Your lights are shining all around while you're going and. Um, it's, it's a happening, and it's, it's dark early, where, um, you know, gates wouldn't necessarily be closed for other reasons, open for other reasons. Is that what you mean, Steve? Okay, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Do you want me to pause there on that for you guys to discuss the, um, timing?
Well, the question, the, 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 the neat part that Howard and I viewed is that, um, we have volunteers and folks who have been putting in the. In the trails on Cooper and Weren. They're delightful. If you haven't been out there, please go out. Um, they are, uh, walking trails, uh, ski trails, uh, uh, and these, the Membah team has, uh, actually bought snowmobiles. Such that when the snow pits, Lord willing. Uh, they groom the trails. And so it's not just, uh, free for all, but they groom the trails so you can actually walk or some cross-country ski or mountain bike. Uh, fat tire bike, so.
If I may, Steve, the grooming means pack it down a little bit more so you're not sinking down into the deep, and it makes it a pretty enjoyable ride, but go ahead.
Yeah, so this has been a, a neat, uh, project for us to understand. Howard and I were quite impressed with what's going on. And it's been going on for a couple, two, three years at Riley, and now they're, you know, introducing this to Cooper and Weren property. Their request is to open up the gate on a regular basis, uh, with these hours, uh, that we have in the other parish street.
And it's great for walkers and cross-country skiers too, to have that kind of surface to walk on. Some like to go bushwhacking out in the boonies in the deep snow and all, but, um. It's mostly, makes it pretty enjoyable for the majority.
How much mileage will you actually have out there?
Hey, I'm glad you asked. If you want me to go ahead, just tell you about what's going on with it before you go to the hours as much. You had a question first, though, you want?
I just wanted to know on the cross-country skiing, do you have, um, grooming that actually makes tracks for the cross-country?
No, just a flat grooming. In fact, I first saw this up in Cadillac, um, off its township up there, what their board, um, governance is up there. But it's for walking, and sometimes people, when there's a track groomed, a two-track, people, serious purist skiers get upset about having that track smashed down. So it's better just for everybody. If you have a flat groomed, you can't skate on it. If you've seen that, that's my favorite, to fly through the woods skating like that. But it's a, a flat surface about three feet wide.
Another general question, um. Are there certain trails for certain activities or is it a free for all?
Yeah, well, good que, you guys ask such great questions. Um, what we've done first, and this kind of gets into what Steve was asking too, is, um, what we did first was find the middle. Is, is Legacy Trail the official name for the main trail that's gone through there from?
It was named, it could be named.
I think Kirk and Joe have been calling it, we've been calling it the pedestrian trail, but we're really wanting to call them all pedestrian trails. So do you guys like Legacy Trail for the main one that's gone through there for, for years? Okay, we'll, we'll put that as a suggestion on the, on the map. But back to your questions, Jar. Um, my granddaughter and I first counted pedal strokes between the school, her school, and the airport property. Um, and we did a math problem for our six-year-old granddaughter to divide that into and find a landmark that's right about in the middle of that. So there's a big white pine tree, whatever it was, a hundred and twenty-five pedal strokes in to be right in the middle. And it's really a good trailhead for us to, um, go from. And what we did first was start with, with what we call the skills loop. It's about a mile and a half, and it goes off to the, um, east and, um, north more. And we have little ramps and little, little jumps and dips and things for people to work on their skills, and the Velo kids love it, and they're just out there playing with it all the time and, and liking it. And then another one we did right next to that, just a little bit to the south of that, is what we call the quarter-mile racetrack. It was a really strange thing for us to try and make one. You guys, I guess, I don't know if Steve, other guys, mountain bike here besides Steve or. But we're used to making trails winding through the woods, you know how trail looks in the woods, but we're trying to make this as straight as we could, like a, like an Olympic oval. And it was really strange to try and find these straight, straight routes through, so we, we did that quarter-mile racetrack next, just for a kind of a fun speed thing and just go for it. And what we've just now finished, and this gets to Steve's question, those, that was a quarter mile, then a mile and a quarter on the skills loop. And then what we're calling, going around the whole outside of the property and all, you know, we're just known for making good use. You guys are out there, in fact, you went out there, and we're, we're sneaking all over the place to try and make the best use we can out of the property, see how much we can, we can get in without being ridiculous. But, um, we just last night finished this cross-country loop, we're calling it, that you guys walked on, part of it, I believe, with Kirk. Um, to where I'm, I'm waiting for the measurement, but it feels like all of four and a half miles for that added to the other two, so we're probably looking at six miles total. Which people say it takes more than like four miles or so to be a good destination. If it's, you know, a couple of miles or less. People don't really wanna make the trip there for it, for that, for that smaller amount. But it's looking like a good, a, a good amount to come to, and that leads me to, um, mentioning that now that we've just now finished. Getting all that laid out and we've got it through and ready for snow, the winter biking through the whole thing, it's not this good tread that we'll do in the spring to get it totally flat like a trail you're used to walking on. But, um, we're just now able to then measure this off and get it on. But, um, we're just now able to then measure this off and get it on map material for Howard and his team then to, to put it on a map for a trailhead. And to get all the signs all, all organized for it. So we've just now gotten to that point, which is pretty exciting, I'll have to say. See if I want to mention anything else, um. It would probably be a possibility if you guys wanted to consider for, um, later, later spring, maybe to have a grand opening for it. We might be ready to have signage, if you think is a reasonable amount of time to get some signage done. And for us to do those last kind of little spring smoothing out kind of things, um, that might be a good, a good thing.
So, so the, 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 now listen, now we understand the scope of what's happening at Cooper Van Weren property. The request is there now, the current gate is closed for the winter. The, the, the member in the community that's, that represents the bikers is asking for this, you know, road end parking lot to be open now. Regular, basically regular hours, uh, if, if I recall, the regular hours were seven to nine, correct, during the summer?
Yeah, I, I believe it's seven to nine, like I couldn't be certain.
But, but, but your request is, is about that window of time again?
Seven to eight is what we've said is to be consistent with, um, Riley Trails, maybe. And I have to say, maybe, um, just for you to be aware of, we've been going to work there, um, like three fifteen in the afternoon, which seems early enough, but it seemed awfully late by when we're leaving at six thirty or something. Pitch dark, but it's still open then.
Yeah.
Obviously, uh, a few years ago, maybe last year. Gate was closed during winter, and so that's why it's.
Was there a question of, um, county plowing around there? Like just today, that was today, um, there was a county plow truck sitting in there, like he was just taking a break, like he would swoop right around that and do it while he's, while he's in his runs.
Nothing to do with plowing.
Taking a break.
Maybe she puts, uh. Uh, residents feel like, uh, it would be, uh, used.
I, I think they'd like it not to be used in the winter time from what I've heard.
Yeah. Okay, so this is a, yeah, a policy change that we're opening up a park that has, you know, over potentially six miles of trails to our community. And so, uh, any other questions about opening up the gate? And I think that it's very prudent because we did have a decision by the prior board to keep it closed during the winter. I think it's prudent that, that we asked the member team to come back in the spring and give us a quick report of how that worked during the winter. They give out respect for the decision we made because of the neighbors. Now we're making a decision about the larger community, uh, and use of this park. But I'd like the request, you know, in the spring, we get a report back, how did it work out, you know, because I, I, I think we'll be surprised how much it's used.
Hmm.
Um, any other questions on this before that?
I have one comment, um, just because I know some local, um, residents may be a little upset about that. This isn't permanent, as in we've already established that it would be closed for the winter and now we're reviewing this again. Um, we'll eventually have more parking and opportunity as the land out there is developed that maybe a different entrance could be utilized. By this group. Two, three years, four years down the road, and then we close that road end off again, but. It can be looked at.
It can be considered.
Yeah.
I'd have to agree with Shar on that because. As we, and I'd like, and don't get me wrong, we're using more and more, getting more uses out of the park. It's going to be a nice deal in the winter time now. I think we got to bump up that entrance. A little bit higher. Right now we're pushing it up for a couple of years. I think it's got to be something that's done possibly this spring, this summer to get that new entrance in.
The only, please describe the new entrance in.
Uh, from Ottawa Beach Road. It would come out where the, the gate or the fences actually has an opening right now. On one of the maps, that's where the new entrance would be going back into there. And. That, that end Perry Park from hundred and sixtieth east. As we all knows, fifty-five miles an hour. And the road commission will not change that. And I went out there, the snow we had first, and they don't plow it wide enough. I literally had to stop so another car could pass when we came upon each other head on. I'm thinking, and this is a fifty-five, they don't even spray paint a dotted yellow line down the middle of that road. So we either got to get the road commission to bring that down to a thirty-five or widen the road or.
They can make a problem.
Yeah, uh, this one I can't, uh, we can't say anything, uh, uh, on the road commission. Nope, the road commission has supported the thirty-five mile rock, uh.
Thirty-five mile per hour recommendation and it stalled at Staples. Staples will not sign the. Speed order, um, I, that's not the technical term, but there's, there's, there's a, there's an order that Staples has to sign to change the speed limit and they won't, they, they're just not doing it. And so it stays fifty-five miles an hour unpulsed. I don't know that cars go fifty-five miles an hour down there, but it would be scary. But I can't blame, we can't blame the road commission on this.
Don't, don't understand, I'm just saying how. That new entrance would help out the traffic right there, especially with all the new activities going on in that part. I think that should be a higher priority now to work on that entrance. And we're not talking a fancy paved, you know, hard crush gravel. It's something to lead to that new part of it.
Something considered.
To, to be fair to the, the residents on there, because it is a pretty substantial change from what was already in place. Should we have, I mean, not wait until spring to review this again, but even just from a monthly perspective, have we heard anything? Have there been any complaints? How's it going? Um, just at least for the rest of this year, as it starts to get used. And then adjust accordingly.
Uh, are you saying delay, delay the decision?
I, I think, no, still, I, I'm in favor of opening it, but I think at least put in place that we're going to be looking at it from a monthly perspective. We're not going to wait until spring to reevaluate.
Uh, just in, just in my experience, um, before the gate was put in, there was a whole lot of problems. Since the gate was put in, there's been significantly less problems. The gate does work.
Yeah, that's perfect.
I'd just add, if you don't mind, anecdotally, Steve, is that, um, the neighbors around there have just really welcoming for this. They've been amazing. Was it Kevin, the landowner there, um, along the fence? He just loved to have this going on for it not being a well-kept secret anymore. He had us come right along next to his property and he was fine with it. And everybody up and down the street has been really welcoming and encouraging dog walkers out there saying it's great. So that's just a little, little add to feel like it's well-accepted.
Well, this, this review it, yeah, I would say this review it mid, mid-winter instead of maybe the spring. I, I, of respect of our neighbors, let's review it, you know, say the first of February. I, I can suggest that we put it on the agenda or to say, hey, check in mid-February and our February fourth. So. Alright, uh, any, uh, any motions? Anyone care to make a motion to extend the hours, like, they, they, no, creating, not extending, we're, we're actually creating hours for this game. Uh, that's, that's very.
I'd like to make a motion that we open up the Cooper Van Weren as we currently do Riley Trails, same time, same duration. Uh, and we review the decision again at our February meeting to see how things are going.
Thank you.
I'll support that, but just so you know, um, to mirror Riley Trails, we don't open Riley Trails.
Mirror the time.
Mirror the time.
Mirror the time, yes, mirror the time.
Yeah. And that was a support draw.
Yes.
Alright, thank you, Jim. Okay, uh, motions on the floor? Any further discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Alright.
Thank you, Brian. Thanks for, for your, uh, you, thank your team for all the hard work and that, if, if, I encourage the board to go out and walk and, and actually see that, that what has been done is, is quite impressive.
Thank you for the opportunity. It's been great, everybody. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, uh, committee appointments. Alright, so, uh, I think I talked to everybody about the, uh, committee appointments, uh. Do you have your mind? Sidekick at math. Um, I think everything is, they communicate any questions or, um, modifications to this list? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go with it. So I'll, I'll make the motion. I appreciate everyone's willingness to volunteer beyond this regular meeting. So thank you very much. So I'll make the motion that these respective board members, uh, are wanting to the appropriate committee as listed. Any support on that? I'll support. Okay, thanks, Lauren. Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. Alright, uh, board meeting schedule, thank you. Uh, Howard and I put together a schedule. Yeah, the meetings, uh, have historically gone a little longer as this one's gone a few hours, if we have gone into a closed session yet. I'm sure Dan will be only five to ten minutes as he, yeah, very, very, um, I'm suggesting that we put, uh, a second session on every month. Just to put it on your calendar. Uh, we have a potential, uh, significant capital improvement project that is coming, uh, is on our deck and Brian is, and team are all over that. But we have probably, uh, enough on our list for two meetings, but I am all about not wasting your time. But like get it on everyone's schedule. So that's why I have this on the agenda. This, you know, so you can look at the twenty twenty-five schedule. But I, I just know the, the load of what we do in some of the decisions that we have ahead of us merit having a second meeting. And we could spend a whole afternoon on talking about the park township community building and the strategies and, and the, uh, the ideas behind that. And there's issues like that all over our township. So that's why I, uh, suggested putting a second meeting on your calendar. If there's no, if there's no, um, nothing on the calendar or, you know, we're not ready to talk about it, um, then we cancel. So, but that's the reason we put the second meeting on, so. And I wouldn't expect Dan to be attending the second meeting, so you're not obligated to do that. So. Uh, with that, uh, we didn't have to have, we don't have motion.
No, this, you even have to have a motion to do it. One of the reasons you have to have a motion is because when I came a month earlier today, you were on the. Oh, your agenda, sorry, our schedule, we didn't get it, so that way you're not constantly trying to keep up with it. And I, I don't, I, I'd make Dan show up, but I don't know that I'd pay him. I, I, I sort of, maybe I'd even show up and wait for the fifty bucks, just to, to.
Dan, yeah, I love you, man. I know you love us all the time, but. Alright, so, uh, I, 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 since I made, made the schedule, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the schedule. You know, subject to, uh, you know, every month, we'll make a decision where we're going to meet that, that next time. At that meeting, we'll give everyone a prior two weeks' notice. We're not, you know, we'll make a decision whether we're meeting. And the topic that we're talking on, that's on me to make sure that we have substantive stuff to talk about in that second meeting.
And it's the third Thursday of the month, so we can afford because of.
Yep, so. So that's the motion I make is that this is the proposed twenty twenty-five schedule. Here a second.
Support.
Thank you, guys. We're really good on that one. You guys are hanging me out there. Alright, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Alright, good. No one's, no, thank you. Alright. Alright. Uh, Nate, this is, uh. Oh, no, like, this is where we're at. Uh, Coast Guard, I'm sorry, Coast Guard, you, this is a, I don't have the need to have this, um, and quick, just.
Uh, so I got an email that said, can you, uh, actually, it's really funny because I was dialing, um, General Services Administration. And Lisa calls me back and she says, and your timing is impeccable. I was typing, you know, um, Coast Guard is meeting and asking for who has the authority? To sign a purchase agreement and who has the authority to bind, uh, the township to begin these kind of negotiations around? The building and, 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 you know, when you sign that purchase agreement, they're going to want an escrow, probably, you know, ten percent or five, or whatever it is. And so because this is a big deal, we've never done this before, um, we're, we're buying a new building. Uh, it's from the military, federal government through the Coast Guard Station. Um, my recommendation, because of asking, generally speaking, I or the supervisor have the ability to sign on behalf of the township, I can believe with the supervisor she does. And then by policy, it's also provided to me as well. I think because they're asking, um, we ought to actually vote at board level. And so what I'm asking you all to do tonight is to vote, uh, for who you would like to have authorization to start signing for this own. Like just talking about this issue of the Coast Guard Station, I, that doesn't mean I can go out and buy a bunch more property. Uh, and I think the recommendation is, if I may, is myself and Joe, both have the ability, uh, we both would sign. And, 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 and our two signatures combined would bind the township. Is that, is that, is that what I heard?
That's what we said.
Yes.
And that doesn't mean we're buying the Coast Guard Station. It doesn't mean that we have the ability to sign and then they'll.
Our names are given to them.
Yep, alright, okay. So, and, and I, I defer to. For, um, uh, to have, because she works with the contracts and stuff like that, it's, it, my sense is, is more important that her, uh, for her to have her name on the, than me, but. Uh, with that, is that, alright, so I'm making a motion that, uh, you give, give this particular authorization to sign. Contractual agreements addressed with management, so. For this Coast Guard, uh, Patrick.
I'll support.
Thank you, Shar. Alright, all in favors, uh, uh, any more further discussion? We good?
The only thing I would request at some point is this board discuss what we're actually going to do with the building.
Well said. So, alright.
So the only other question I would have then would be, they, they could sign and bind, but they would sign at our discretion of, as how we vote on whatever it is that comes up.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, yes, got it.
Yep. Alright. Thank you, good questions, and then in this strategy. Good, good, actually good, I didn't bring up at our, uh, strategy session next week. Alright, uh.
We got to vote.
Yeah, vote, uh, uh, in favor, can I, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Alright, uh, this is the point, uh, in our meeting that we're going to go into closed session. I will state this, pursuant to section eight, one, H of the Open Business Act, to consider material exemplifying disclosure by section thirteen, one, G of the Freedom of Information Act. In particular, records subject to a time attorney client privilege, uh, and we need our motion to go into closed session. And I think that actually is a rule fault.
Yes.
Yes.
Don't you want to ask for the call?
Yeah, we got to have a.
I make a motion that we go into closed session. Any support?
I'll support.
Thank you, Shar.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Gerard?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Surnay?
Yes.
Um, Supervisor Spulhoff? And Clerk Zero P, yes. And what do I, what do I do for treasure?
Just pass it.
Okay, the motion passes, so we're. Alright.
And we give.
I'm sixty nine sixty.
Yes.
That was way between somewhere between ten minutes.
Somewhere between whatever.
Sorry.
That was a really good thing.
Get out of here.
I know. I make a motion, we move back to open session. Okay.
I. So we're back in to discussion possible action items. I'll keep it short. It's this is an item that I was introduced to by the MTA, the Township of Excellence. Excellence. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, make it. There was a motion and a support. So all favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll post.
She wants to know.
I made the motion.
And I was. Yep. Thank you. All right. So on the Council of Excellence is something for your review to I believe it will bring a level of performance to our board and to our staff and to our community that is. It just is a good thing to do. Howard has a friend up in Spring Lake who has been awarded the Council of Excellence. And so we're doing some investigation and this might be one of these sessions that we say, hey, should we go for it? But I think it's something to really look into with the MTA. I have a lot of respect for this as well. In some sense, they're ISO nine thousand if you want, you know, called something, you know, it's kind of ISO nine thousand of the townes. So I leave that. I put that in there for your perusal, but no decisions on that tonight. We're doing some more work on that. Strategic planning prep work. I think there's a page. There was a page from Kurt.
Twelve D.
Twelve D. And so, yes, if you if you see, see the list, it's less we'll run run into next week. So it's very similar to last time, but I the only prep I would do or ask you to do is to say, okay, there's items that are arguably sprints that are, you know, the three to six to nine months. And I would call the sprint, the decision that we would make to go to a village for the park township, community building. I would say that's a sprint decision, not saying that we take less time to do it, but we'd have to hustle to get it done. But also there's marathon type decisions and, you know, that's those are things that maybe are on your list saying, hey, over the last three or four years during our term of, but we should address these issues. And so this, if there's things that come to mind, let's raise that strategic planning and we go for it. So with that, I'll flip to the managers' report very briefly. And I expect update on cemetery. We hired a new cemetery assistant. We sold a number of plots recently and we're splitting our purchase order for our column bearing. So that's moving forward. And also our expansion and we're sure it's moving forward. Um, working on the parts masterwork which is going to be out to the general public on Monday. Um, that will create a timeline that we likely need to have a special meeting in January and hopefully children's items, something that we've already got on the schedule. I don't think my best. All of the board members are getting phone numbers. So Mr. Supervisor, uh, clerk, madam clerk, um, and madam treasurer already have phone numbers, but all of the trustees are going to be getting uh, individual phone numbers. And this is important because if you don't want to get out of your cell phone, because you don't want to be the texting you on your private phone, which would be foible. I mean, you will have a phone number. Um, I think it was resolved today. I think there's still some IT, there might be some IT stuff for playing around with them. And that phone number can be forwarded. You can just let it go to voicemail and you get the email messages on your email system. You can forward it to your normal phone. Um, but you'd be able to give out a bunch of phone numbers so that you can maintain the privacy and the cost of that is like making. So I just said, you know what, just get a new block of twenty numbers. It's like three bucks or something like that. So it's not costly, not costly. So that's happening. Um, enforcement officers are on board. Unfortunately, our planning assistant um, has decided that he's going to be taking a new job. He was interviewing with some other folks while he got our job. One job that apparently he was interested in, uh, came through, clearly had offered it, um, happens to be our old planning firm. So we wish him well. Um, but, um, and we submitted a grant for three hundred fifty thousand dollars for a playground out of the community park. Hopefully, I'm feeling good about that one. It's funny, I wasn't feeling good about the others and we got them and that was really good, which I don't know. Maybe I'm jinxing it, but with that, I don't take any questions. Tomorrow, tomorrow, there's going to be a press release that talks to the over eight hundred thousand dollars in the V N R uh, grants that have been announced. So we can celebrate that. So I want to say personally, thank you to Howard and Tommy for persistence. That's a that's not insignificant cash.
No, it's a hard job to write grants. So I already gave Mr. I think kudos on that. Good job.
In in regards to the five hundred thousand dollar grant for the community park, is that something where we can have discussion around where's what makes the best sense? The best direction for investing that?
I'll happily give you guys some great updates a week from now, uh, but the the it's going to go towards a portion of the parking lot and the bathrooms for the pickleball courts. Um, so the the amount, the 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 amount is set and the scope items is set. I'll give you guys a whole update on timing and how that potentially relates to more construction out there. And then the windstorm is the repairing ward blocks that are back in the. And you just just my first perusal of the five hundred thousand and the fun part there is parking lots aren't terribly fundable. There aren't fun things to raise money for. Yeah. And and it's nice to have bathroom on the pickleball boards. And so I think we kind of talked a couple of good things on it. To me. George, uh, let's see, let's see, back to my agenda.
Public comment.
Public comment. Okay. So this is the second opportunity for public comment. I understand we have a couple of people from the public. Any public.
If I know. Um, Howard and I talked about something back in the, it was probably early fall or late summer um, that he suggested I talk with Steve about sometime. So I hadn't gotten around to it till just now. I saw a public comment and it was worth waiting for because this really means a lot to me. Um, you all are familiar with Bowerman's Blueberries on James Street. And what a hopping place that is and the bike path going right by there. Um, kids are crossing the street. People are crossing the street with bikes, walking, everything in the cars. You talk about speed limits on Perry Street. Um, it's probably really is fifty five there by not being marked. And if it's marked fifty five, I think people are going sixty five through that, maybe seventy. And kids are being pulled by the hand and it's just kind of chaos. And I've suggested that, um, a cross mark, a marked crosswalk be be put in there. And Howard had ideas of, um, I guess he worked, it's been worked on a little bit. Some of you were, um, been on longer. Something has been worked on some with Bowerman's. Um, but Howard had some ideas of flashing lights and things and to the tune of twenty thousand dollars each or something like that. Um, but I'm just afraid someone's going to die there and I don't want that to happen without us doing at least something simple first. Um, you know, a simple yellow diamond sign that says pedestrian crossing ahead or and and I guess there's there are things that have to be done with the pavement. I think the and it's already been done asphalt from Bowerman's to the edge of the road. And maybe needs to be done on the other side of the road to the residential property to make it official to be able to have a crosswalk right there. But painted yellow sign, but I'd like that to put that before you guys to think about it. Cause I just think we wouldn't want to have somebody dying before we do a simple thing. And if a great, you know, flashers are good later on, you know, let's do that. But something for starters to to keep the, you know, the the worst thing from happening.
In in typical public comment fashion, we can't respond.
Did I go longer than two minutes? I just noticed that too. Sorry.
At this time of the night, we're okay.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Brian. All right. We'll take that under. And public comment. All right. We'll close public comment. Thank you. All right. On to board reports. Let's start. We'll start a little second.
Uh, not much happened after the coming fair board. Um, in January, they have their annual convention at Grand Rapids. At the Amway, that's where they sign contracts for new company events and things going on up there. So there are certain people there. Let's hope it for the fair board.
Rest day.
That's true. I I don't know if he emailed the board. I got a couple emails, but Jeff Meyer, the president of the fair board, he stepped down at our last meeting a couple of weeks ago. He's been on for probably, if you're going to guess, twenty, twenty five years. And he's really done a lot. Him and his whole family's done a lot. And he just wants to spend more time with his family. He's not even on the fair board anymore. He's going to stay on as a associate member. And he's going to help out as much as he can. He's not going to go like Adrian. And he's going to call me. I'll be there. I'll still help you. There's a lot of knowledge you've got to pass on to the So we have a new fair board president and then his award courage be.
So.
And then, um, the Z B A, we had one hearing and it was approved and Mika gives a great report. So we're pretty much in her report.
Um, at the West Michigan Regional Airport Committee, I had the pleasure of joining that earlier this week. Um, officially unofficial because I hadn't officially been appointed yet. Um, but two main decisions were made. Um, one had to do with the training group that is there and I don't remember exactly what their name is. Um, but they haven't paid their bills according to the contract. In fact, they haven't paid a single cent for the past year and a half. And, um, so a decision was made that unless they provide a good faith estimate or um, effort by the next meeting that their contract will be terminated. So we hate to lose the training group, but there's opportunity to find another one. So somebody that pays their bills. Um, the second big issue was a discussion on the crosswind runway. Um, and a decision was made to keep that. And Howard, you were there for that decision. Um, hopefully I get the terminology right, but a decision to keep that on the agenda or the P C A or
A L P.
A L P. Um, but not to proceed with building that runway yet. It's going to stay on the A L P so that it could be decided down the road, but there's no decision to build.
I got nothing. Sure.
Nothing.
You don't have a fighting question. Yeah.
Correct.
Brian. Yeah, Chance, don't watch that fellow city.
I watched it. That was very good.
Uh, she was in front of the shed that we supported through the. All right. So I think we covered everything. Reminder, next week, we have the the strategic planning. We'll send out our alerts about dinner. So we'll have dinner planned and thank you for your gracious. Guys that went over three hours. We have time to cover today. Uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
And support by Brian. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thanks, Josh.